You have to replace them with another superstar. You're considered exceptional. And we're extremely fortunate to have another exceptional superstar to step into the game. We have with us today Ms. Sheila Music. Sheila, if you'll say you can put a face with a name. You know that she's been in our tax office, special tax collector for us. She comes to us with a good deal of experience, thirty and a half years of experience working as a, in the school system, as early childhood manager, two office manager stints in different schools, and of course now our tax collector. So she brings a lot of school experience with her, and I think you'll find her to step in. And Tracy is going to continue to work with Sheila to make this transition so you won't notice any changes at all. Her office is located, as you come in, on the left on the way out. You can reach that through the central office number. We'll patch anything up that we need to along the way until we make and complete this transition. So I say thank you to Tracy. I say welcome aboard Sheila, and we look forward to continuing good work here for you, Board of Education members. Next item we have on our agenda today is we have an attendance award. Each year, the state encourages school districts to participate in a high attendance day. Now, obviously, we try to make every day a high attendance day, but we put a special emphasis on this day. The schools that participate, they're competing with other schools in multiple categories based on size and things like that. And so we're very fortunate today to have a winner. So Mr. Hood, who serves multiple roles in the district, but one of those is the director of people personnel, is going to present an award here to one of our schools for winning.
All right. I'll go ahead and let Mr. Boggs come up. He's going to be representing the, we've won a high attendance award twice, both of which were at the high school. About three years ago, the high school also won the high attendance award. So this was on, this time was on September the 20th. There's two different categories, small school, large school, based on size. And so we, this time, we're on the small side. The last time, we were actually on the large side. There was a few differences in numbers, but they broke this out as 750 or more and 749 or less. I will tell you that on this, on this day, there were 621 students that could have been at school that day, and there were 601 of those were present. So we only had, they had 20 kids at some point during the day who were not there for a given part of the day. So the actual number, 96.12 percent. So we are going to, this is a certificate of recognition. This certifies the award to Barstown High School, recognition of high attendance day, regional winner. So we were, this is not a state winner, this is the regional winner, and those many schools that are in our region. 96.12 presented to Barstown High School, and we're going to present this to Mr. Boggs. Thank you very much.
You're a close to the camera.
Okay.
Very good. And so, hold on one second. A normal day's attendance in your district or in average of the state would be?
Yeah, ninety-four and a half. Right about, the high school's generally around ninety-four, so they made some good strides that day. It also hit during a time we had some sickness going on, so kudos to them for making this more important, I guess, than they normally do because they were 96.12 percent and everything worked out great. So our region has a lot of schools, and that's a really good number. The high attendance for the, for the state on that day was 98.12 percent, and that was in Robertson County. I don't know how many students they, they may have had that day. It would not be anywhere near 700 or 750 though, so. Good job, High School.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Boggs. Good work.
Appreciate it.
The last item I have is just a reminder of some activities in your board packet there. I think we've talked about the regional KSBA meeting on October 24th. We will meet here and go from there. So also, make note of the Veterans Day program on November the 10th, if you will. There are several music programs going on, activities coming up, and also holiday programs. So take a look at that and enjoy the ones that you can attend. And that concludes superintendent's report today.
The next item is recognition visitor. If there's anyone that'd like to address the board, please stand, call him, give your name, address. Item nine. Item six, discussion of assessment results.
Let me do a brief introduction here. The release of our 1617 student assessment scores, they look different than they have in the previous years. As you know, we're no longer using the no child left behind model. We're now, instead, we're using the Every Student Succeed Act, which was passed in 2015 as part of Senate Bill One in 2017. And so this will be considered a transition year for our assessment scores. We set the bar pretty high last year. I'll just put it that way. We were a distinguished school district, but we're very, very pleased with that, and I can say without a doubt, once again, the Barstown City School System will be celebrating their assessment scores again. Even though they're not using the measurement system that we're accustomed to, the numbers are extremely impressive. I'm going to let Tim and Michelle, our CIA directors, share more information about how we were successful, but Board members, I want you to-
To know, and I want you to be proud of your administrators, your teachers, teaching staff, students and parents. We have knocked it out of the park again. So at this time, we'll have Mr. Beck and Ms. Balding present our 2017 test scores.
Thank you. As Mr. Holzclaw said, we no longer have a single indicator, as we have in the past with a single indicator and a single label, but we just, we still have many of the components that we had under the previous label. So when we look at those, there are essentially five components with around 20 indicators. So we took those five components and indicators from previous years and compared them to this year to better to be able to give you an apples-to-apples comparison, because that's how we grow. So when we do that, of the 20 indicators that we looked at, we have grown in 17 of those 20s from the previous year.
Well, remember, you'll find out on 119, I think, in your packet there, that page you're trying to-
Sorry, we have a hard copy too. And as the third bullet shows you, of those 20 indicators, 14 are the highest we've ever achieved on state assessments. And of those 20, 12 are now above state scores. So we're really excited about where we are with those different indicators and components. And what we'd like to do now is we'd like to break each component down and take a look at each one individually and give you some information on that. So we're going to start with component number one, which is achievement.
And our achievement scores are based on the student's performance on the test, whether it be a novice, apprentice, proficient, or distinguished. So we have nine content indicators that we looked at for our scores this year, and that's in your chart there on that first page. The first is our elementary reading score. You will see that that is the highest score that the elementary has received in reading at a 53.3. Our elementary math went down a little bit. We saw a decrease in that. It is important to note that there was a decrease in the math score statewide at the elementary school level. So all the districts across the state are looking at, you know, their math instruction, instructional strategies and practices, looking at common assessments that we are using. And it's also important to note that the state right now is looking at a revision of those math standards. So we'll be taking all of that into consideration as we make plans to improve those math scores. Elementary social studies was the highest that we've had, at 57.6. And our elementary writing was our highest score so far, and also outscored the state score for this year. Middle school reading was an increase and the highest that we've had, and it too was above the state score. And our middle school math, much like our elementary school, we had a decrease there. Middle school social studies was higher than the previous year. We're still working towards that state score. Our middle school writing, we took a decrease, and that one too was a decrease we saw statewide. And then high school writing had a significant increase there and was well above the state score.
The next component that we're going to take a look at is college and career readiness. And just as a brief review, those are the students that have met benchmark on ACT or considered college-ready, and the students that get either through ASVAB or industry certification or ACT work keys are considered career-ready. One of the things I'd also like to pause and let you know is, in your packet, your form looks a little bit different than the one you're looking at now, because as we put this data together, we were very excited about how we did. We thought it would give you some perspective to go ahead and add the previous years when K-Prep initially rolled out, so you could see how we were doing over time instead of just the previous year. So with CCR, you can see that we have now achieved the highest CCR rating that we've ever had, and we are now above the state reading too. The next component is the end of course, or as you'll hear them, we love our acronyms. We call them EOCs, end of course. EOC courses are based on ACT Quality Core. Of note is that that is changing. Those will be in the future based upon the Kentucky Core content, so we will no longer be able to compare previous year's EOCs to the next year's. This will be our last year doing that. They're working on English II as we speak. For last year, we had a tiny little dip in English II, but we're still above the state average. Algebra II, unfortunately, following our math trend, we saw a decrease there too, just like other districts across the state have seen. That was universal across the state. In biology, we have our highest ever score and above the state, and in U.S. history, we had a significant increase, and our highest ever score and above the state. Next is component four, that is our graduation rate. The state of Kentucky and the federal government use what's called a four-year cohort rate. It's our students that come into us as a freshman and graduate with a regular degree in four years. And you can see that we've now achieved 95.1, which is our highest ever, and we're significantly above the state in that average. And our last component is ACT, and this is probably one of the greatest shining stars that we have. And you can see in ACT, there are four components, and then we get a composite score each year. And in those four components, we have now achieved the highest we've ever achieved, and we're significantly above the state in almost every area, even our composite, which is a 20.4. And one of the things that I would like to remind you, as somebody that deals with data a lot, some numbers don't represent the true score. In ACT, when you look at the difference between a 20.4 and a 20.3, that's significant. It may not seem like much, like a six-point gain or a 10-point gain, but even a tenth of a point is extremely significant on this because it's a nationwide norm reference test. And then lastly, I'd like to leave you with, as Mr. Holzclaw said, we no longer can take all of these components and put them together. In our previous year, any school district that had a holistic score, all put together of all these components, of a 70.5, was considered a distinguished district. Well, we made that, and we were able to celebrate that fact that we were a distinguished district. There's actually another component that's a little bit higher than that, and that is a 71.9. And if that cut off, you're in the 95th percentile of all districts. Last year, only 16 districts across the state achieved that. Well, when we put together our components this year and we do our internal calculations, we are slightly above the 71.9. So while we're not going to get that distinction from the state level, when we do our own math and put it together, we would have seen a district of distinction this year. I feel very confident in letting you know that. So we're very excited about where we are. Are there any questions? Yes, sir.
Is there any correlation with the changeover to the Singapore model? Is that an across-the-state event that might have somehow been a negative trend in the math?
I don't know if it was across the state as much, but any kind of changeover can always, even if it's a positive changeover, can sometimes have that initial, they call it an implementation decrease, where that first year-
Was that a couple of years ago we did that, or this year?
I think it was four years ago, wasn't it?
It's been a while, I know.
It was four years ago.
I just wondered if that had somehow transcended into a negative effect or somehow.
My first initial reaction would probably be no, because we just saw this dip this year. And last year, we saw a pretty substantial increase in the work, especially at the elementary level, substantial increase. So more than likely, it's probably not in that area.
Congratulations.
We didn't teach a single class. It was the teachers.
But you're the bearer of good students.
Yeah, we do get to do that.
Can you tell me a little bit about the focus groups going into looking at the gap?
Yes, yes, I can. Previously, the focus groups included what would be considered a non-duplicated gap, meaning if you fell into any of the categories of gap, which are all of the minority groups, not white and not Asian, but all of the minority groups that traditionally underperform on standardized tests, you were considered gap. Free and reduced lunch, if you're free or reduced, you're gap, and then special education, you're gap. They have sensed, or will this coming year, add another category to that, which is the English language learners, our ESL kids. Those are going to be gap. And those kids have never been a part of state testing separately. They've always, they've taken the K-Prep and they're part of the whole group, but we've never pulled them out and just measured this alone. So that'll be a little different too. And then the last piece that's going to be different under the new accountability model is these students were always compared to themselves or compared to the test itself. We never compared those students with non-gap students. And for the first time ever, that's going to be a part of it, to where we're going to see how African-American students did compared to Hispanic students, compared to white students. We're going to see how special ed did compared to, that will be a part of our new accountability. And the term that you're going to hear to describe that is going to be one you're probably aware of, it's achievement gap. They're going to be monitoring the achievement gap between all of those groups.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else have a question? Very good. Thank you all so much. Appreciate the great news.
Thank you. Okay, item, you understand, item seven, approval of revised BG1 bus garage relocation, building upgrades project. Okay, for this item, what we have here is, you guys approved the BG1 some time ago, as you're aware. The project is now, for the most part, complete. So we have a revised BG1 in front of you today that basically takes everything into consideration. Any of the change orders, which you're going to be looking at on the next item, those change order numbers will be incorporated in there as well, along with some updates in the contingency fund. So basically, all we're doing for this is taking the BG1 that we had, this is the revision that KDE wants to see, to see all of the numbers, it gives the total funds, where the funding source came from and everything for this project. And I would assume after this, we're really close to the closeout of the BG1 for the bus garage. So we'll talk about this a little more in section eight, but just the approval of the revised BG1 is what we're asking for at this time.
It's going to be a little while before we get to that. Small punch, I'm sorry. I was just going to ask, are all the punch lists complete? I mean-
The punch list has been completed by the architect. There are still a couple of items that we're looking at for the contractor to come back and complete. There's one item on there that the, Mr. Spalding with code enforcement has asked us to do a mandatory upgrade, a mandatory upgrade from when this building was done, has to do with fire, the fire alarm system, in an area that no one knew would need it, at the garage door, because they're open most of the time, probably all of the time during the day. So we're taking a look at those. We don't see that being a big expense, I don't think. We'll see how that, we'll see how that goes. But yes, for the most part, it is, everything is finished, other than just a couple of other small items. And again, we'll be coming back to you with a BG5 later on, which will be a final closeout for this.
So just to sum up what we're doing, we're looking at a revised BG1 with some changes that we need to, you have approved this, but we're going to be approving the revised BG1, which will be connected to the next item on the agenda. Okay?
This is inclusive of the beam change?
Overall, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Make a motion to approve the revised BG1?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there are none. Item eight, approval of change order one and two, bus garage relocation, building upgrades reports. Project. Once again, this is a, the change orders that we have, we have done. You have approved those. There were some, there were some numbers that we had to get updated as we were working through this project. Again, we have taken a look at, or I have taken a look at all of these. They are in order, some of which, of course, number one, change order that you approved was the beam that Mr. Stone, you just talked about. That's pretty self-explanatory. And then in change order two, it shows change order two, there was actually seven items on change order two, some of which were a cost to us that had to be, that had to be done, was found through coding, through different things throughout the project. There was at least one, item number three, there was a credit to us for almost $8,000 and some, and something that we actually found that we did not need, which doesn't happen too often, so we were, we were very grateful for that. Item number two was basically, we found that the sewer, there was, there was actually a hookup for the sewer in the back that, I won't say that previous owners didn't know about, they knew about it, but we were able to hook into this and save us lots of time and money down the road. I mean, the main sewer that goes all the way down Sunset Drive and over to the industrial park and Withrow Court. So it's, it was a big deal. That was a $10,000 item, but it was, I can tell you that was well worth it for us for now and the future. So I can answer any questions you have, but you basically approved these before, but because of the changes and the fact that we have somewhat of a new, a new system that's taking place simultaneously, which I'll show you in another item, I'll just ask for your approval again for change order one and two, with all the numbers intact, that would be on the revised BG1 that you just approved.
Questions?
Make a motion to approve change orders one and two.
Sub moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there are none. Motion passed. Item nine, approval fiscal year 2018 capital funds request.
If you'll note on, I think it's on page 137 of your packet there, you'll pull up a Kentucky Department of Education capital funds request form. We'll work our way through this, and hopefully we get to the end of it, it'll make a little bit of sense to us on what we're actually doing. This does come back to, in the end, we're going to be looking at a number concerning the beam in the warehouse area. So we start with, what we're, what we're trying to do, we're going to get a, I guess to begin with, the formula that we'll be using is that capital outlay plus unused bonding funds equal capital funds. So we need to get to the capital funds, and that's what I'm going to walk you through. Up on line two and line three, there's a total of $220,923. This is the capital outlay money that we receive each year through the SEAC, and it's based on average daily attendance, the number of students that we have. We get so much money. Keep in mind that typically, this money can be used for things like replacement of air conditioning, repairs on roof, unforeseen. In past years, with, the recent years, with the financial situation being difficult, we've been able to roll this money into general fund, and you get that almost automatic. Now we're going back to a little more of a, things are leveling out some, and so now we're going to do this just a little bit different. But that's where that money comes from, the 220,000 comes from there. Then if you look at, on line number four, you'll see the building fund. That's Fund 320. And now this is the money that we talked about back in June. We had Joe Nance come and talk to us about the bonding projects. This is the money that we, that we generate through our nickel accounts, and it's going to, you'll see an amount there of $2,361,561. All right, so we take those two, we take those two numbers. We're going to go down on line 14. We're going to look at the amount of money that we have committed to make in our debt service. In other words, what do we owe on these bonding projects? When you look at that number, you'll see on line 15 there, you'll see $2,226,690. So when we do our math here, we go back up, we add line three plus line four, and you won't see this number on your form, but we'll see $2,582,479. Then you take the debt service that we just talked about there on line number 15, subtract that from the number I just gave you, and you'll have $555,789. Then when you deduct the beam out that we're trying to pay for out of this money, that's what you're doing. You're going to be approving this number here in just a few moments. We subtract it out, we get $425,899, and that's what you'll see on line 17. So that's the remaining balance of the capital funds. Remember what makes capital funds? Remember, it's capital outlay plus unused bonding funds. So we have $425,889 left in that account, and we're taking $129 out of it, $129,000 out of 900 for the beam. And what you're approving today is permission to use that $129,900 out of the total of $555,789. That's a long way to get there, but we're there.
Could you repeat that?
Can I repeat that?
Any questions? Comments? Okay, did I hear approval for fiscal year 2018 capital funds request, or 129 to use to pay the beam?
Sub moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there are none. Item number, number 10, approval BG1 softball field project.
Now, we've been talking about this since, well, back in the summer, we began our conversation last meeting. You gave us approval to move forward with the demolition of the, of the old softball facility, which we have basically completed that at no cost to the district. And so we are prepared. We have a blank slate. Architects are working to put together construction documents, which we're going to see here in just a minute on item 12. And then on item 11, we're going to be looking at a BG1. Todd is going to share with you a little bit more about this, but you just, you just saw BG1 just a few moments ago, and then you're going to see a completely different form of a BG1 that Todd's going to share with you in just, in just a second. And what we're telling you is, starting in October the first, a new system has been put in place. And we refer to this as the FICC pack. And another great acronym.
Yeah.
But this will be a little bit different process, and Todd's going to walk us through these two items. First of all, we're going to be looking at the BG1, so.
Yes, so the, so the FICC, as it's known, what is happening there is, before, all BG1s, basically, the architect was the, the one who would put this in for you, either him or Joe Nance. One of those two people would initiate the BG1 with our approval, they would send it to the state. Well, now, I'm not sure what, why- Well, now, I'm not sure what, why, or how, but they're asking for us to do this. So this application that you've got before you was the BG1 initial form that we sent out to get their approval. So I want to go through that with you just a second. I want to highlight a couple of things here in this document, one of which, there are, on the description and scope part, this, of course, is a replacement, and it must be replaced now because the other one is gone. So there is a replacement there. It is also considered a minor project, based on the number that the total cost is going to be. So there's a minor project there. Over on page 2, if you'll look down, there is a financial plan of probable costs. And what we have, what you'll see there is, we've got a, basically, a total construction cost of $250,000. We have a construction contingency, which is $12,500, and an architect engineer fee of $26,500. Just so you know, we just did a revised BG1. These numbers will change based on the total construction cost. We do not believe that we will have a construction cost of $250,000. We think, because of being able to do some of the work ourselves, being able to have a market that is really good right now for bidding, we do not see that as being a number that we will definitely go over. We do see that being a number that is high, and we will be able to come in much lower than that. Over on the next page, page 3, is other probable costs. So if you add those three columns up, you'll get a total cost of $291,000. Now, on down on the funds available, what Mr. Holstall was just talking about was, at first, we had this basically listed under the capital funds. They have asked us to go back and do this as a general fund project, and then, at this point that he just explained, we will go back and pull this from that general fund category, and be able to use these capital funds how we see fit for us on this particular project.
Does that make sense to you, board members? That process we just went through on the $129, we'll pull this number out of that the same way. Temporarily, we have to show it on the general fund. We'll come back and get it out of capital funds.
So that balance of 400 and some odd thousand is where this balance will be subtracted from?
Yes, that's correct.
At the end of the day, once they get past the initial general fund?
Yep. You have to request permission. It's which one comes first? And they put us in an awkward position. You can't do the transfer before you do the BG1, so...
Right. Okay, so I'll go over this and the next one, and the item number, after we approve this part. So if we can get an approval for the BG1, for the softball field project, then we'll move on from there.
To be full disclosure with you, what will happen is, you'll, assuming that you approve the BG1 today, and then this is already in the department's hands, and so it's a matter of procedure, it's a matter of timing for them to get to it. Things are complete. All of the requests that they've made to us to adjust, adapt, a few things, we made all those things. It's sitting there. The status now is processing, meaning basically that they need to have time to get to it.
So once we pull the trigger on this, what's the calendar days necessary to complete the project?
Before the weather breaks? Well, that's, I guess, I don't know the real answer to that. We do, well, we have taken some steps, I think, to ensure, for instance, we're going with an approval from the city. If for some reason we are not ready to play in April to be able to use the Don Haunted Field, we have an agreement already set in place with them, and the people, and our people already know that. They knew that way up front.
But completion itself, that'll be, we'll have to get help from those construction people that are going to bid on it, and we will give some guidance on how soon we want that done. Be honest with you, we will not play games on the field this, in 2018. It won't happen. Grass doesn't grow in January, February at all.
That's what I was getting at.
Yeah, so we definitely have another field through the city. We have a letter of grantiness permission to use that field. We're going to convert a baseball field to a softball field, and then when we leave, we're going to put it back to a baseball field. The timing, Mr. Hood's just been wonderful working with Mr. Jeffries on this, and I've worked with the mayor on that end of it, but they're doing a renovation of that field, so our timing is absolutely perfect. So the stuff, the things that we do certainly just help them along the way as they reconstruct to a baseball. Anything to add to that, Mr. Hood?
I think that's...
Would we consider artificial turf for the softball field?
You know, to be honest, most people don't want to, most softball players don't want to play on turf. The only real place we checked, and I went to Bull County and took some nice videos, and I was all excited about it, and I was the only one really excited when I came back and showed them. I don't know if it's a trajectory issue, I don't know. They just, and around here, we have, there is none. The closest one that I know of is Bull County, and the only reason they really have it is because their football field is turf, and they incorporated those two in together. Same way with Lexington Catholics. So anyone who has a turf softball field only has turf softball because they are incorporated into their baseball or football complex. No one that I know of just has a softball field that's turf. But I don't know, I don't know why, because as a coach myself, it seems like if I didn't have to line my field and worry about right now, all of those things would be great, but that's just not what, that's just not what you see right now.
Hmm.
Yeah, I thought the same thing.
Plus, cost would go significantly higher.
Yeah, the cost would have been, yeah, right.
We'll discuss this after the meeting. I might have some input.
Okay. So I was, I still...
We're waiting on an approval.
Okay, I need a motion to approve BG1 Softball Field Project.
Need a second.
Add a second.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed or none? Item number 11, approval of construction documents, softball field project.
So last time we were here, I was able to show you a picture of this. They have done, they have done a little bit of adjusting to this particular picture. This is, this will probably be more easy for you to understand and to get an idea on what we're doing than the actual form that I show, that I've sent you, this document. This document basically is talking about roof plans, it's talking about spacing of trusses, it's talking about where all the footers are going to be, things of that nature that I have to really look at and make sure is correct. I can tell you that our plan is to mirror the baseball field as close as we can. So, you know, the brick, the colors, everything, so they all look similar to what we have down there. We also, in this plan, have a place for storage like they do, and a possible addition of a locker room, which the baseball has. So, you know, this addresses Title IX issues, it addresses the fact that our field needs to be updated. Lots of great things going on with this particular plan. A couple of things that they changed, one, on our request, we thought maybe we would have wings here for these, for the bleachers, but we are able to, with one larger set right here, we're able to eliminate two side wings, which is, which gives fans the ability to sit and/or stand in this area right here, which they do for baseball, and a lot of people like that. This also gives us a lot of, right here in this front row of seating, it gives us, I think it was four or five different areas for ADA accessibility, to where they can sit right here inside and see over this wall, so they would have prime seats for that. The concession stand is going to be, right now, we're going to be opening up the back of this current building. When you leave today, if you'll look, there's only one structure that's really left out there on this particular side. And so our plan is to put the concession stand in the back, which will allow people from both sides to come around, get that. That is currently over on the side. It doesn't work real well. This gives them the ability. Plus, there's a set of stairs in here that leads up to the top of the press box that we're going to eliminate, get those out of the way. You'll actually go through up the steps here and into the press box at the top, much like our baseball field does now. As you know, we're moving the field basically 20 to 22 feet from this direction. You may have seen some flags out there. You may have seen some different things that we have set up that kind of shows that. That's going to get us our dimension right here, which is 185 feet. You can see it goes right to the edge of the parking lot. There is a little bit of movement, possibly, this direction, not a lot, which anything we do here, I'm kind of using this, will help us in that area. But we do have the 185. We are going to be proposing an eight-foot fence instead of a six to allow us to, on height restrictions. All of this that you see here will be poured concrete. Everything that you see on this dotted line will be a fenced-in area. It goes all the way around, of course. Mesh will be from the end of the dugout around the, it'll kind of come in around that. Then, of course, there'll be no mesh here for people to see. Gives us the ability, this is a gate entrance right here, and we will probably look at a gate similar to what we have going into the football field a little bit with our, you know, our arch there. Gives them the ability to charge admission that is somewhat limited right now, hard to just rope off for them, so, yes.
Does the fence that's parallel to the road, the exterior fence, is that an eight-foot fence?
Right here.
Yeah.
This one is, I believe this is six.
Does it have privacy slats?
No. This particular fence right here would be similar to the one that we just currently took down.
You have mesh on it though, instead of slats?
Yeah, I don't know the...
My problem with it is, why are you going to pay when you get it for free if you're standing there on the sidewalk, where you took the wings off of the bleachers?
Why wouldn't it have mesh on it, Mr. Hood?
And it could, it very well could. When we had that discussion, they asked where for sure I wanted, where we for sure wanted mesh, which I told them from the edge of the dugout, which would be all the way to basically here. So I think what you're asking, and I see your point. So what we want is, we also want mesh here, because if not, they could just stand out here and watch everything.
I mean, there's a difference between, are we on the same page, mesh versus a privacy slat, the little things that go into the channels?
And I would say that what we have done here is the mesh, and what we have always done in the other areas is a mesh fence, a mesh fabric, I guess.
We are priced that.
We will.
You can see, that slat idea's a good idea.
Okay. Yeah, we'll definitely do that.
With the wings gone there, I mean, you're only, what, 30 feet from the home plate there, and there's really no, if your goal is to charge and admit admission, then you're not going to have much luck there once...
Yes, I agree. So yes, we will address that with them on what type of material we need from there, basically, to here, in those two areas. Yeah. The other thing we had to do right here in order to give, right now, there's only about three to four feet from this, well, you can't see it on here because they've moved it, but there was about three to four feet right here to get through. So we'll actually have to cut this sidewalk just a little bit. That's a six-foot sidewalk. I think it will go down to a four, which still gives you plenty of room to walk through there, but it opens up this area for people to come around to the concession stand, or if they walk around this way to get to this dugout. Just gives them extra. As you can see, the best thing is, we're not moving the existing transformer. We think that that's going to be, we've got plenty of distance there. None of that has to move, and believe it or not, if my projections are correct, the scoreboard will be able to stay by about two feet. So that's not a deal breaker. It is a lot of work to move the scoreboard, but if we have to, of course, we will. If not, it will just save us a little bit of manpower and money for some poles, new poles, so... Any questions? Like I said, this form's a little bit hard to see, so I can just tell you that we have to be inspected. So there'll be permits, we have to have a, we have to have a, all of our forms have to be inspected before concrete's poured. There'll be a framing inspection done, and then a final inspection done, much like you would on your home. So nothing will be done that can't, that has to be specked out by Mr. Spottin and his crew at code enforcement, so... Any questions over? If not, if we could approve the construction documents, then we will be ready to move forward.
I hear a motion to approve the construction documents for the softball field project.
Sub move.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or none?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Item number 12, second reading, board policy updates.
Well, these are going to be the easiest ones to understand today, all right? What we found during the request for proposal for our new health clinic is that we worked real hard on the contract and on the language going into the proposal, and there were five board policies that needed a little bit tweaking to make sure that the health clinic fit into that properly. And as a reminder, 5.3 and 5.31 were just exceptions that allowed the health clinic to exempt those two policies. 9.21 was the health requirement services policy, and in that policy, the health clinic was going to be in addition to all the services that we already do. We wanted to make sure that was clear. And then 9.221 was a supervision of students, and that says just identified students that that came from any of our other two campuses onto the health clinic. And then the last one was 9.2241, which allowed the health clinic to dispense medication in our policies. And I think they're all in good order, and with your approval, we will get those placed into our new policies.
I think it's our turn to approve.
Yes, sir.
He said it was good to go.
He did. We got them approved by our attorney before I brought them to you the first time, and so they are good to go.
Comments, questions?
Make a motion to approve, second reading.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or none?
Thank you.
Item 13, KDA Local Civics Testing.
We're not going to have to take this today.
Well, it's possible. You need to pay attention, Mr. Beck said he could very well give this to all of us. But in 2017, the General Assembly passed what we know was Senate Bill 159. In short, what this says is that a student that graduates from high school must be able to pass a test that is created at the local level and approved by the local board. And so that's kind of why we're here today, and Mr. Beck is going to provide us with some more details on that at this time.
Thank you, sir. As Mr. Holstall said, because of the new Senate Bill 159, our current juniors will have to pass, starting in 2018, a civics test of 100 questions. Those questions must be developed from the material found on the United States Citizen and Immigration Test. So what we did a few months back is we began to get together all of our K through 12 civics teachers, and we put them together and gave them that information, and we began to develop our first section of tests. We went through about three different revisions before we felt like it was ready. You have a PDF copy of that. Some of the things that we wanted to make sure that we did were, number one, we wanted to make sure we created it in a format that was multiple choice, so that we could grade that quickly and efficiently and get data back to the students. We also wanted to put it together in a platform that we controlled. We decided on using the Google platform. It'll be given to the students in a Google form set up as a quiz. The students are required to score at least a 60% or better to be considered passing, and there are no limits on retakes, so the students can also retake it. What we're doing is, we're going to put together this material and also give it to the elementary and the middle schools, too, to begin reviewing that material. However, the students are not eligible to actually take the test until ninth grade. So next year, although the juniors must pass it, we're going to begin administering it to ninth through 11th, and we want to go ahead, because once a student meets that requirement, whether it's in ninth grade, 10th grade, they've already met that requirement, and they're good to go. go. Also, if they leave for some reason and go to another county, that, that carries on with them the same way their freshman algebra credit would also too. So what I have before you today is the final product that we've put together for that, and we're ready to administer in the spring with your approval.
I have two questions. One, there's an iPad app for that too, on the immigration test. Have you discovered that or looked into that?
Yes, yes.
Training or study or whatever?
The actual, the immigration and naturalization test that they give, they ask open-ended questions, and that was one of the struggles that we had creating it. A good example of that would be a question that may say, if you were taking it, they would say, "Mr. Stone, could you name a Native American group?" Well, there's a list that the administrator would have of literally hundreds of those. That makes it difficult for us to score something like that, because we'd have to hand-score literally all of those. So we revised a lot of that material, so it would say, for example, in that situation, our test says, "Which of the following are not a Native American group?" And, and we give three that are and then one that is not. So we will have access to the iPad app that we could use on that, but it would be the one that we've created in Google.
Second question is, is there any kind of exemption for an ESL?
No, there is not. The only caveat would be special education students. Their IEP considerations still apply to this test also. So if they get a reader for a general purpose assessment, they would for this also, but our ESL students are required to pass this also. Which additional information that, I know you didn't ask, but if it clarifies a little more, we do an outstanding job in our ESL population, that over 90% of our students are exited from the ESL program by the time they get to high school. So if we're looking at numbers in the 30, elementary and primary, by the time they get to high school, we still only have one to two students that are technically still in the ESL program. They've generally been exited about fifth grade, the last of them in middle school usually. And usually if you get one in high school, we got them late.
Thank you.
Mr. Stone, just one follow-up on your question. That app you're referring to, is it a study app?
Yes.
Would, do you see any benefit along the way if a student did have a difficult time that could probably use that app?
Absolutely, because it's the same material, so.
I just had a friend that took the test and all that, and he, we twisted each other right before I was helping him out on that app, so it's very...
That's a good idea.
It's very helpful.
Yeah.
Which kind of led to my question is, for a student who may not be in a structured classroom, is there a list of study guides or whatever that they can go to for the material?
Just through the immigration and naturalization test that we spoke of, that's the only one that we have available. And that's where we had to draw all of our material from to create the test.
This is, then, is not a uniform test.
That's a good question. It is and it is not, in the sense that we all had to pull from the same 100 questions that Mr. Stone was speaking of, but the way that those questions are asked and the way that the students are tested is going to look different at each local school board depending upon how they decided to put together. I will say, we've shared our material with the CKEC Cooperative, and a lot of districts have taken what we've already created and have begun working for it. So I think what you're going to see is in Center of Kentucky, a lot of them are going to look just like ours. There's, there's just not a lot of reason to change it much once a good product's been put together.
Question, more comments? Do I hear approval for the KDA local civics test as presented?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, are none.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 14, approval of 2017-18 notices of shortened school day.
We have Mr. Boston going to share with us some details here on the next two items.
Still, we're kind of on the fall break Disneyland trip. I think my timing was about off, about couldn't get out of my chair. So guys, we're coming to you today to go over our shortened school/week notices that we have for the school year. Every year, we have students in the district who have a modified attendance schedule. That schedule's determined by their IEP team or admissions and release committee, and then we then notify the board of those for, for your approval. If you look in your packet, there should be a total of, I believe there was eight shortened school day notices this school year. Four of those are students that were on the shortened school day last school year, and then four of those are new shortened school day or school week applications. Two of the new students came to us from other school districts, already on a shortened, a shortened day, so we're just continuing that. But we still meet annually to, to make that determination. The other two students are two of our moderate severe disability students who are receiving outside therapy somewhere either in our community or in another, in another town, maybe driving to Louisville, and they have appointments basically stacked back to back, to where instead of their parent taking them multiple times to a location throughout the week, they've scheduled that in such a way where they take them maybe to one clinic for this appointment, this appointment, and this appointment, et cetera. So that, that allows them to miss one school day, but makes it a lot easier on their overall week and their stamina and ability to still come to school and participate on those other days. We do have one student who had been on a shortened school day all of his school career that is now participating in a full school day. His past year was the first, the first year that he ever did a full school day in his whole educational career, and this being the, the second year, and he continues to make exceptional progress. If we'd have seen this student in preschool and kindergarten, I probably would have thought, "I don't know if he's ever going to be able to." But through these therapies that he's had in school and out, and just the team that he, that's been surrounding this kiddo, he's doing, he's, he's doing phenomenal things. We do get medical documentation and medical recommendations from each of these child, children's physicians. This cannot be something the ARC can consider without a medical provider saying, "Hey, I think little Jimmy or little Susie or whomever needs this." So the ARC then takes those medical provider recommendations, makes the discussion, talks about what that will look like in the school week, and then writes that into their special education plan. Are there any questions over any of these?
What would be a typical reason for a student requesting a shortened school day?
That's a good question. So we have a couple of our students in the district with severe autism, who to even come to school at all is such a stress on their sensory system, that they can typically only stay a few hours at a time before they just either shut down, you know, they need to go to sleep, they're physically and emotionally exhausted, or their behavior escalates in such a way where it's just not productive to, to them to be here to learn. It's, it's actually more detrimental than spending the remainder of the three hours a day at school. So a lot of times, when parents recognizing this, but with us still having compulsory attendance laws that requires children to come to school, the parents seek the medical providers justification or support in saying, "Hey, my daughter or my son, I don't think this is good for them. I've talked to the school about it." We get that. And the reason, the whole reason we do these shortened school day, shortened week notices are that when a child is on a shortened day or shortened week and the board has approved it, we can get full ADA funding for those children, even though they're not here the entire day. There's a special coding that happens in infinite campus that says, even though child A may be gone a half day, the school district can still get the full funding piece. I know that's a little bit more than what your, what your question asked, but that's, that's some of the examples. The other one was like, we have a, a couple of young men at our elementary school who, whose parents and whose doctors have recommended outside therapies that may be provided in the school setting, but these outside therapies may target more medically related needs and not necessarily school-related needs. So rather than have appointments at, you know, five, six, seven, eight o'clock in the afternoon, having to get their kids from school around three, drive to Louisville or wherever to get these appointments, they'll stack them all in a certain day. So one little guy misses, I think, Wednesdays, and one little guy misses Thursdays. And the, the ARC has said, yes, you know, the, the medical professionals recommended this. We agree that it's not a detriment to them at school to not be here for that day, so we're writing that into their plan where they can be excused that day rather than count it absent. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So if there's no more questions, I just ask for y'all's approval on these students.
Do I have approval for 2017-18 notices of shortened school days?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, are none.
The next one's me as well, guys.
Hearing impaired.
Hang on one second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Item 15, approval of service contracts for hearing impairment.
All right. So we, also in our district, we have a few students who are hearing impaired, and what we've historically done is contracted this person from Nelson County. Well, she retired at the beginning of fall break. Kendra Long is her name. So rather than, Nelson County's not replacing Kendra. Instead, what they have done, they still have to have a HI teacher on staff, but what they have done is hired a visually impaired teacher and got what KDE calls a waiver on their visually impaired teacher to also service their hearing impaired kids. So that vision impaired teacher will go and get additional trainings to be able to service the hearing impaired kids also. But Kendra reached out to me, because she's been the person that we've used from county, and said, "I would be interested in contracting with you guys, so you don't have to go, you know, elsewhere, look at a staffing company and so forth." She knows our kids, she's been working with these kids for years. In my opinion, it was the best practice to keep, keep that relationship going. And, and we also don't have enough kids where we need a full-time person. So we contract with Ms., with Ms. Kendra, and she comes on a weekly basis to meet the IEP service needs of those kiddos that have hearing impairments. So essentially, our contract with Nelson County is ending because she's no longer there, and instead of contracting with Nelson County, we're just contracting with Ms. Long directly. So I'm just asking for approval of that as well, please.
Okay. Questions, comments? Do I hear approval for service contracts for hearing impaired for Kay Long?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, are none. Item 16, approval of travel authorization.
All right, we'll ask for your approval of a FBLA trip to Nashville, Tennessee. Basically, the reason for your approval is that it is an out-of-state one-day trip. Everything seems to be in order there. Any questions? I'd be glad to answer some, answer those for you, appropriate chaperones, so forth.
Motion to approve travel authorization.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, are none. Item 17, approval of leave of absence.
We have three of those in your packet today. All three of these employees are requesting a medical leave. They have doctor statements that are necessary. Also, family medical leave act is also completed. Ask for your approval of these three.
Do I hear approval for the leave of absences for, for the three employees?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Here's a harder one. Item 18, resignations.
Disprued.
I don't have anything else, I guess we don't, we're not going to adjourn today.
The good news is, we do have two folks that are resigning their positions, but in Ms. Rogers' case, which I think you're referring to, she's simply just, she's going to continue with and focus on the financial piece here, which we're very blessed to have her there. So hopefully you will be made aware of those items now, so that's all we have in it. I guess it's a good thing we don't need your approval for that one.
I don't have anything else on here, so there's no rep, no meeting termination, so we'll just sit around for a while.
Sorry, on the back.
Site-based meetings are there. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Why don't I have the second paper?
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm just questioning, comment, that I don't have the second. Chairman.